It is 7:00 PM and I call the August 28th, 2023 School Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Excused.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
Maggie Smith, here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Bunch.
Here.
Crystal Lee.
Here.
It was six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Barb is moved?
Second.
Kadija?
Yep.
Has second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. Okay, and this evening we do not have any public participation. So we are moving on to the District Administrator's Report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. One, we had the opportunity this past week to welcome our new teachers. We had nineteen in total at that time. And just thank our staff for all the great workshops and events they put on for the new teachers and our staff to diswelcome them and make sure they're ready to go for the school year. And then today, this morning, we had a kickoff with all of our staff for the school year. We started with a breakfast at seven and had an opening ceremony. And we always like to make sure we not only get our message across, which we really talk a lot about, our vision of belong, serve, succeed, and our motto of team this year, together everyone achieves more, because we know it's going to take all of us to do what we need to for our students in the district. And then we did our best to go outside and get a picture. It is already posted up there of all of our staff spelling out Holman. So just kind of showing, you know, we need to be united in that as we move forward this school year. Our staff were wonderful and they're busy at work already. They put tons of hours in in preparing for our students, who are going to be arriving officially. And we have a lot of open houses during the evenings this week, but they arrive officially on Friday morning. So we look forward to that. It was nice just to, the energy's starting and the excitement, and it will definitely ramp up when they come on Friday. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have just one recognition. I just wanted to thank our Athletic Director, Jason Luloff. He had written a grant for an AED and it was from our Green Bay Packer organization. So we now will have another AED at our high school installed near the weight room in Gym D area. So that will be a total of three AEDs in our high school, which is great. So, thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion. Item 9.1. I welcome Amanda Goodenough of Good Enough Consulting to present the results of the Assessing Hate Bias and Identity-Based Harm Survey. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. As you heard, my name's Amanda Florence Garcia. Good enough, I use she and her pronouns. I am founder and CEO of Good Enough Consulting, and we've been partnering with the School District of Holman in the capacity of educational equity and justice consultants for over the last year. This partnership has involved a few different components, but the one that I'm here to talk about tonight is our assessment efforts to better understand the presence of, in the context, for hate, bias, and identity-based harm activity across the district schools and across the district's people. So, we disseminated a survey called Assessing Hate Bias and Identity-Based Harm at School. It was conducted as part of the School District of Holman's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and specifically district-wide prevention, intervention, and healing efforts around hate and bias and identity-based harm. Researchers for this assessment were Dr. Stephanie Bowman and myself, but I also wanted you to see that there is a fuller team, and also someone not pictured on the slide, Laura Abalera. But Othron Blas and Angela Biratella have also been helping in different ways behind the scenes as co-facilitators, co-consultants, writers, et cetera. So, the goal of this particular assessment was to better understand if hate and bias was happening within the district, and if so, how it manifests across the schools. This would enable the district to work towards preventing such harm from happening and to better support people affected by hate and bias. So for the purposes of our survey, we provided a definition of hate and bias, so people understood what we were asking about. And our definition is any physically, environmentally, or verbally harmful act that is or appears to be, and this could be consciously or unconsciously motivated by bias against basically social identities, right? So anything from race, ethnicity, to sexuality, gender, class, et cetera, any identity status protected federally or by district policy. So, I won't go through all of these questions on these slides, because I'll go one by one in just a moment. But we used single case study methodology and applied a mixed method survey to better understand participants' experience with hate, bias, and identity-based harm. We created and distributed four separate surveys. So participants volunteered to take the surveys. It wasn't required by anyone. And in fact, every question was also optional for everyone, and we promised confidentiality. So I wanted to go through the questions one by one, but just wanted you to see them also as a list. So we asked things from the beginning, right? Like, have you experienced or witnessed or heard about any of these things? And then if folks selected yes, then we asked some follow-up, like, you know, in what form did it take? What social identities were being targeted? How frequently does this happen? Who's being targeted? Who's responsible? Where is this happening? And so the student survey was minimally tweaked from the employee survey, and then the wording was significantly simplified for elementary students to account for varying reading and comprehension. And so here's a few other questions for the middle, high school, and employee survey, again with a little bit of variance. For third through fifth graders, we asked questions instead of the ones that you see on the screen. We asked, have you experienced, witnessed, or heard about hurtful behavior, like bullying or making fun of others at school? How often does this hurtful behavior occur? How have you or your classmates been hurt? Why are people bullied or made fun of at schools? They also had a face where they could drag the dot to change the face when we asked how you feel when you experience or witness hurtful behavior. And then we asked, is there anything else you would like to share? What's your grade level and which school do you attend? So I'm just going to go one by one, and I'll go relatively quickly, just because I know you all got the information in advance, but I wanted to at least give some voice to this. So the first question we asked, have you experienced, witnessed, or heard about social identity-based bias, hate, and/or harm within the School District of Holman in any of the following forms within the last couple of years? So we wanted to put some parameters on it. There are people who hold on to stories for a long time, and that is absolutely valid. But we also know that people who are hearing that can write that off, right? If we're not putting a timeframe on that, well, maybe that happened so long ago. So, wanted to keep it within the last couple of years. So there were lists of examples that people could choose from, and people could choose as many as they wanted to. So it was check all that applied. And then we also included a field for people to write in qualitative responses. And this question was also skip logic. So if people said no, that was an option, right? No, I haven't heard of or experienced or witnessed any hate or bias, then they would have been skipped down to the last couple of questions, which were just like, you know, who are you as far as your role in school or your grade in school, and just those demographics. So, what we're seeing on this slide is basically the top five most, the responses that were responded to or selected most, the five highest ones, I would say. So for teachers, staff, and administrators, what they were seeing most was name-calling, stereotyping, biased jokes, microaggressions, and non-inclusive language. You can see some repeated for middle school and high school and elementary school as well. The middle and high school surveys were, it was the same. And so some of the data had those combined. And so why you see dark green versus light green is because those were the two that it was consistent across middle and high school, that biased jokes and name-calling were the top two forms of hate and bias harm that were identified. But then after that, it kind of varied based on middle and high school. So these are just some of the ways that people are experiencing or witnessing hate and bias. And as you see in the report, there's also some narrative for each of these questions as well. The second question, which social identities are at the center of this harm that you've experienced, witnessed, or heard about? And on this slide, we are seeing over 57.2% of employees who participated in the survey stated that race and/or ethnicity was the largest or the main social identity being targeted. And then you see sexuality, gender, body size, disability. Again, there were more that were listed. These are just kind of the top five for each survey. Middle and high schoolers were looking at sexuality as the most targeted, but you can see, I mean, these numbers aren't that widely different. There's not a huge variance from like the first three or four. So sexuality first, then gender, body size, race, and/or ethnicity, and then disability. When we look at the elementary school, they had some different options. And they mentioned body size. Then it was color of your skin, then they didn't know, then the classmates they play with, and they need help doing things. So we needed to do a little bit more hypothesizing on the elementary one. So that gray middle column, we're just trying to consider, right? Some of the different ways that they might have been responding. So when they say body size, that could be all sorts of forms of sizes, whether it's weight, whether it's shape of body, whether it's height. And so we put that there. Color of your skin, it could be other things, but I think largely that is understood as race. Classmates they play with could be lots of different things outside of social identity. But sexuality, gender, and race as social identity were some things that we were hypothesizing. And then they need help doing things, we thought perhaps could be a disability-related response. Then we asked, how frequently does this hate-bias harm occur? And we have a couple visuals here. So on the screen right now, this is the employee survey and the high school survey. And you can see, I think across all four surveys, the largest response was that it's happening sometimes. When you look at the often and very often though, and if you were to combine those, I think that is something to be paying attention to. And so when we look at the frequency, and even with middle and elementary, right? There's not even just going back and forth, like, they're very similar. But so it's absolutely happening sometimes. And again, when you combine very often and often, we could also say that it's happening often, if not very often. So nobody should be able to look at this report and say that hate and bias and identity-based harm is not happening in our schools, right? Like, these are our employees, these are our students, who are speaking their truth and sharing their experiences. And so when we combine sometimes, often, or very often, we're seeing 85 to 91% of the folks who responded to this question as saying it's happening, right? Either sometimes, often, or very often. Question number four, we asked if known who has been the person or persons targeted with this hate and bias, identity-based harm? We did not ask elementary students this question or some of the next few questions. But we did ask employees and high school and middle school students, and both surveys identified students as being the most targeted folks with hate and bias and harm. But then when we look at employees, they thought the next most targeted group was staff. And then teachers. Then you see district, family, teaching assistants, substitute teachers. And again, there are other identities as well, just not listed on here. Middle and high schoolers said students first, and then they weren't sure after that. And then it was teachers and substitute teachers and staff. Research question number five, if known who has been the person or persons responsible for this harm? In both the employee and middle school, high school student surveys, it was clear that students within the School District of Holman were most often the perpetrators or people responsible for the harm, with percentages at 70.9% from the employee perspective, 56.2% from the middle and high school perspective. The staff and administrator employee participants had listed additional people responsible, so staff, teachers, community folks, students outside of Holman. But for the students, middle and high school, it was students within the district, then it was students outside the district, then they weren't really sure, and then it dropped pretty significantly. But there still were other folks that were responsible for harm according to them, and they had some stories to back those things up as well. Number six, if known, where did the incidents happen? And in both of these surveys, they're pretty similar, right? And it's mostly where we might find less adult presence, right? So we're looking at hallways, we're looking at cafeterias, we're looking at social media or virtual gathering spaces. The one that isn't listed next on middle and high school was school buses, right? I mean, a lot of these could probably have been guessed. I think the thing that is always a little bit interesting, but maybe not necessarily, but is classroom, right? Classroom, you'd think is, there's adult presence, it's more of a controlled environment versus some of these other ones. But there can also be a lot happening in classrooms. And so sometimes it could be, right? Like when a teacher is busy doing something over here, then something is happening, right? But there also were stories of like harm was happening in classrooms, and the person responsible was the teacher. So that is the case as well. So, I mean, you know, we don't always have all the contacts, and we don't have names for people to follow up with. But that is the one that always stands out to me. And looking at other surveys we've done, or even just other realms, like higher education, where I came from, that was always like a number two location for hate and bias was classrooms. So, not necessarily unique, but I do think it's something to point out, because it's a little bit different than the other spaces. Number seven, what action have you taken when you experienced, witnessed, or learned about social identity-based bias, hate, or harm? And our employees, I think it was great to know or to assume that their highest response perhaps indicates that they feel like they have supportive people around them to share their concerns with, whether that be a staff member, a teacher, or friends. Another 43%, over 43%, said that they intervened, or they talked to their friends. But then we have a significant, right? It's not as high, but 14% is still significant, I would say, of people who said, I didn't know what to do. And so that's certainly some of what we want to be supporting folks with and giving folks tools and skills to better be prepared for situations that they might be in where they could intervene when it's safe. For our students, the highest response was that they did nothing. And this could be many reasons. Some of what was shared was that maybe they didn't know what to do, maybe they were scared to intervene. I think sometimes it was like, well, that person's being bullied, and if I say something, then I'm going to be bullied. So there were some narratives around that. But certainly concerning, that's the highest response, is that they did nothing. So figuring out how and where we need to support our students and that. The next response was, I didn't know what to do, right? And then I talked to my friends, I ignored it, and I talked to a staff member. I'm going to come back to this one in some of the key takeaways, because I do think that there's more to unpack here with the action taken. But those were the top five responses. Number eight, if willing, please share more information about the specific hate, bias, or harm you witnessed or experienced. There are so many stories, and hopefully you read some of those in the report. And if you haven't had a chance to read the report yet, I strongly encourage you to do that. I will also say that that report does not include all of the stories that we heard. So it was just some selected stories. I do want to give voice to some right now, just because I think it's always important to amplify voices and honor these stories. And some of it may be hard to hear, but I just want you to hear what some of them have said. And again, you may have read that in the report. So someone said, a student came down a hallway with classrooms and defaced the teacher's door that had a pride flag, Safe Space sticker on it, by writing expletive, gay, and then F-word expletive derogatory term. I'm not going to say those. Another person said, some people call me the N-word and say I belong in the slave days. Student saying to another student that they should go back and work on a cotton gin. People make weird faces at me and mimic my eyes. I've constantly witnessed guys body-shaming girls in the lunch line. I personally often get called homophobic slurs, been threatened, and once had slurs written on a sign for my locker. This is all based on the fact that I'm openly queer. Many teachers are also not great with respecting gender identity by frequently using incorrect pronouns and names. I personally have been followed around, harassed in person, harassed online, bullied, sexually assaulted, physically attacked, sent death threats, and been called slurs because of my race and gender identity. People telling me to kill myself and saying that all of my community should die. I'm mocked daily in front of teachers, and they do nothing because they think it's normal at this point. And I know if I do say anything, they will pass it off as teasing, and they won't do anything. They have ADHD and sensory, so they can be annoying, but I don't believe the student has to have balls thrown at them or be bullied. The student is told to go to another table at lunch. Many times, the student has no friends, but tries hard to make them. And of course, I remove names and identifying information as much as possible. Those are just a few of the, what I would call heartbreaking stories, right? I mean, that impacts people's ability to just even like exist, right? Or to learn. It goes against, I think, any academic mission. Number nine, we asked, just how about the impact? How does this impact you when you experience or witness it? And so again, a lot of stories. The previous question was asked to employees and students. When we asked about the impact, we only asked students, not because hate, bias, and harm doesn't impact employees. It was just an oversight, to be honest. And so when you read the impact stories, those are all student voice. And I'll amplify a few of those as well. So, and these are all different responses, right? But you feel like you are not good enough, you just want to cry because you don't look like other girls or people. Mentally and emotionally, it begins to feel like it's true, or they don't care about me. It makes me not want to come here even more. Many of my trans friends have a lot of uncomfort whenever they're anywhere but on their own or with immediate friends. And it has pushed many of them into struggles with depression, anxiety, and self-harm. It impacts my depression, and I don't feel safe anywhere. It's hard to get up in the morning, and this just makes it worse. It makes me infuriated. It's not that difficult to be a kind, decent person. The students here are not good people on the inside. It sucks, especially because the school is supposed to be a safe school. It's safe for everybody but minorities. And then a longer quote from one student. My friends and I have been threatened to get beaten up, raped, and just general harassment that makes us feel dehumanized. It's a terrible feeling. Many of us already struggle with mental health, and all of this makes it so much worse. Some of my friends have attempted suicide and participated in self-harm. I'm not saying that this is exclusively from the school experience, but it definitely has an impact on your mental health when you go to school feeling scared for your safety. Will you be bullied today? Do you have to be ready to verbally or physically protect yourself? Sadly, these are the questions that many have to ask themselves at school. So those were middle and high school students. We did also ask elementary school students, and that was the face one. And according to how we would view the face, over 95% of students who responded to the question dragged the face to make a sad or unhappy or angry face. Number 10, how can the School District do better to prevent or respond to acts of hate and bias and support those impacted by such harm? This, Dr. Stephanie Bowman had put this into themes, but there's also narrative under all of those themes. But so, in general, do I have that here? It was to acknowledge harm, and this is from employees and from students, right? So employees and students, some variation, are saying, acknowledge harm, actually try, more education, honest discussions, more discipline, or punishment, more supervision, and monitoring. Then we asked, is there anything else you would like to share? You can read more about that in the report. And then we asked, which of these best describes your work setting or grade level? And so these are some of the numbers. And so these are just the percentages of how many, for example, in the employee one, how many elementary school employees responded or self-selected, self-identified as elementary school within the survey? So it's not the percentage of how many elementary folks in general responded. So this is the makeup of who responded to the survey, looking at employees, middle and high school, and elementary. So I just want to do some quick by the numbers and then key takeaways. The first one is that 2,605 people responded to the survey. That is incredible. So when we look like across the district, right? And trying to understand how many people were possible, right? Are out there to take the survey, we're looking at 72% of the district responded to the survey. I mean, I would say unprecedented, right? Like, it's incredible. So kudos to everyone who participated and people, employees, teachers who helped to create a space for students to take the survey as well. That was very impressive. And so that obviously was one of our main takeaways. And so this is some of the breakdown when we look at overall response rates. So employees, we had over 61% employees respond. We had over 51 high school students respond. We had over 86 middle schoolers respond. And elementary was just the third through fifth grade, over 94%. I mean, it's wild, like those numbers. And again, at least, I'm not a big researcher, but all my research friends tell me, right? Like, researchers hope for like a 30% response rate, right? To be like statistically significant. Often, that's the number that I hear. And so, like, this is awesome. So also, when I said, you know, people, nobody should be able to look at the survey and say like hate and bias and identity-based harm isn't happening here. They also shouldn't be able to like devalue it, right? And by saying like, well, not many people responded. Like, this is like critical mass, for sure. These are just more numbers about the role or grade specific. So it was 419 employees total who responded, if you're curious about that, 626 high schoolers, 782 middle schoolers, and then 778 third through fifth graders. So those are the actual numbers instead of the percentages, if that helps. And then just a few other numbers I wanted to amplify. So of the 2,605 people who responded to the survey, 1,495 of those people reported that they either experienced, witnessed, or had heard about hate and bias activity. So almost 60%. And then again, the frequency that we talked about, but when we look at the numbers, it was 780 people. Reported frequency is either often or very often happening. So over 50%. And then the other number I want to point out is 31, which I will come back to in a moment, but only 31 folks utilized the Stop It! reporting tool, which is the tool for folks to be able to respond or share anonymously if they would like about some of these situations. And so that's 2.07%. So here's just the rest of the takeaways, right? Identity-based harm is happening, most often as student to student, most often in the form of name-calling, biased jokes, stereotypes, exclusion, or microaggressions, most often targeting gender, sexuality, race, or ethnicity, disability, and size. It's occurring most often in hallways, cafeterias, outdoor grounds, school buses, social media, again, less controlled spaces, and usually where there's a higher ratio of students to adults. The frequency is absolutely concerning. Students perceive lack of action. So this is what I wanted to come back to. So there was a statistic that said teachers and staff and administrators, the employee survey, reported that they often intervene, right? I think it was like 40-some percent. They often intervene during acts of hate and bias. But there is a strong perception among student respondents that they do nothing. That was said over and over in the survey. It was said in student listening sessions. And just want to name that, because like, that perception is reality oftentimes. And so, and there might be many reasons for that. There could be miscommunication, it could be just, you know, gaps. It could be that some of that is happening as well. But whatever it is, right? Even if it's like every time a teacher is intervening, for whatever reason, students, time and time again, think that they are not. So that is something to pay attention to. The other thing, which I mentioned with the Stop It!, is that the district has knowledge of only a fraction of hate and bias activity. And so where I said only 2.07% reported through the tool, there was another statistic- And so, where I said only 2.07% reported through the tool, there was another statistic. I think it was about 8% of students had talked to an adult in the school about something, right? So, fine if they're not reporting it through the online tool, but we hope that they're like sharing these experiences with people in the school, because otherwise, if we don't know, we can't do anything about it. Only eight-ish percentage, percent had shared with someone in the school. So, there are different ways that people can share, and they're not utilizing it. And so, that is concerning, right? And I think, you know, there can be a question of, "Why did we get so much information? Was it the specific questions we were asking? Is it because we are an outside entity and sometimes people feel safer to share and speak their truth to somebody, right? There's, 'I don't have a relationship with you,' and so, there won't be that cost," whatever it may be. But we did hear a lot of stories, and we need to close that gap because the district, I think, has, would have a hard time to address stuff that they don't know is happening. The last couple, clearly, right, there's an impact to mental health, psychological safety, and in some cases, physical safety. And so, I think we wrote in the report that this, this should raise concerns for anybody who cares about the mental health and well-being of our students or anybody for that matter. And then, the last thing I'll just say, which is in the report, but while students and employees are asking for more punishment and discipline, our philosophy often is to advocate for interventions that are more restorative when possible, right? To like give, at least have those options. So, we do like to encourage schools to think more deeply about what accountability can look like outside of some of our narrow ideas, right, of punishment. And we would caution schools from increasing surveillance or policing techniques, and instead, make meaning of these student requests, especially by recognizing that they want to feel physically and psychologically safer to be who they are. They want to feel protected in their environment, right? And I think sometimes, when all we know is like punishment, cameras, right, like, that's, it makes sense that they would say that, but I don't know that that is the answer or the only answer, right? And so, definitely would like to see us explore more restorative options as well. Ultimately, the task of your district and every district is to figure out how to build a stronger community, where everyone is on the journey toward understanding the role that they can play to make our classrooms and buildings more inclusive, safe, and identity-affirming. So, that is a collective responsibility, and it is a big task, but I think we have a lot of data now to really dig in and figure out where our gaps are and where we can try to close them and do better. So, that is what I have for you. I'm happy to respond to questions if that's how this goes. So, let me know. But I might not have all the answers, but happy to try to respond.
All right, questions?
I just wanted to say, thank you so much for this report. I don't think it's news to anyone that I have believed there is, was a problem in our district for many years. And I think without the data, much of what you said, you know, the data to support that there indeed is a problem versus like isolated incidents, I think is really impactful because it's so difficult, you know, without the data to really build that motivation, that momentum to do something about the problem, let alone sometimes we kind of skip to like, "What are we going to do about it?" And we need to spend time really, like you said, amplifying those voices, honoring those voices, so that we indeed can really come up with a plan to address that. I think I loved, you know, the piece about the Stop It!, because I think sometimes, as a system, we put in place a strategy that we believe is addressing the issue because we don't know how big the problem really is. So, as someone who's going to be part of the DEI committee, I just am so thankful for this report so that we can really come up with some goals to hold us all accountable. So, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
I'll echo the thank you and also agree about the importance of data. One of the first things that I thought about when I looked through the graphs was actually, I don't know if it was a coincidence or not, that we have the DPI bullying report, I think, coming up next. And I know DPI sets that definition and that the definition has challenges, but like, there is a striking difference between like incidents of bullying that are reported to DPI and what we see here. And there's also, I went and looked it up, there's also like a very marked difference in what we heard from the WRBS compared to what we're seeing in here about students who reported being bullied. And it feels like it's an impossibility that only 15% are being bullied when we have, I forget what the percentage was, saying sometimes, often, or very often, they were hearing hateful messages. So, thank you for putting this together. It's like hard to read, makes me sad, and I'm also really glad that we did it so that we can, like you said, do better and try to close these gaps.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Something that resonated with me really strongly was talking about, I heard you mention that when people feel psychologically unsafe, physically, mentally, emotionally unsafe, there's no, I mean, there's really, that threatens their existence. So, being able to teach them math, or science, or social studies, it's just, you're not even meeting their basic needs. And my background is in psychology and social work, and so, that resonated really strongly with what we know about child development and that need to feel secure. And I think, you know, yeah, I agree that this was definitely difficult and also very enlightening. And I think anytime you're given the opportunity to know better and do better, it's a gift. So, I really appreciate the work and the effort that went in, the amazing response rate that we had from staff, from students. You know, people in our district seem to really care about this and want to do more. So, that was really incredible. I think it's, you know, some defense mechanisms that come to mind for me are like, "Well, this happens everywhere," and it does, and that doesn't mean that we don't have to be a leader in how we respond to it. I think that we have an incredible opportunity, you know, now that we have this, to, you know, find new ways to do things and actually be a model for what can come out of knowing deeply, or starting to know, or seeking deeply the knowledge about how our students feel safe in our buildings. You know, or this idea of like, we can just pick out, if only we knew the names of every single person that was, you know, committing these things, then we could just pick those people out and we would fix it. And that's just not how it works. You know, these, we're all products of our society, of our social interactions, and to pick out individual people, or individual, even individual educators and staff, is not really fixing the problem. It comes from us creating a culture where people are encouraged to share when things are going wrong. And I think the idea that so many people were willing to share means that we're at least on the right track. You know, my only thing is I have been a part of these kinds of things a lot of times in my career, and so, the next step is actually to take action and to do something with it and make sure that this doesn't sit on a shelf and gather dust. And so, yeah, I appreciate that. The school board will take up a DEI committee in an effort to kind of keep the ball rolling on this because, you know, we all have our, our ways that we can grow. And I think the, when we become more welcoming, when we become a safer community, then everybody really benefits. So, thank you again. Thank you to your team, to everybody who helped out on this. The report is very impressive. Obviously, I would expect nothing less, but yeah, I look forward to seeing how this continues to influence district policy going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
I was just wondering, you might have said, but when was the survey? When did that go out? The survey for employees went out in like late January. And so, and some of what probably helped with some of the employee response was we had a professional development and then created some space at the end for folks to take it while they're in the auditorium still, but then there was follow-up email sent. And so, the survey remained open until June. So, if they had the link, they could take it anytime after that as well. But the majority probably took it in late January. The student one, I don't have the exact dates, but I want to say it was in April, somewhere around like April, middle, high school, elementary, they all kind of did it on their own schedules, but within probably a two to four-week timeframe, but that was later spring.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's good. I was curious. I was assuming it wasn't summer, but...
No.
It's supposed to be great statistics for summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing some of the statements as well. I think it's, it's, I mean, it hurts your heart to hear it, but I think it's good to help bring more awareness, actually hearing what students said themselves. I guess something as everyone was talking that I was thinking about is trying to come up with a plan to reach parents as well and community members, because you know how children are responding and acting in school and stuff can sometimes speak into the home. So, how, you know, what would we do? It's just something to consider going down the road, not just, you know, targeting tactics for the students, but getting everybody on board.
Yes.
Thank you for all the work you put into this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yep, all right. Thank you. And like I mentioned to you before, you did an incredible job of putting this all together, and I just commend you for, for all of it. And it, it's going to be, there's a lot of work that we need to do, and it's not something that's going to just happen overnight, and it's going to take years, and we just got to figure out where we, where to start and, and work on it over time. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I will also just add that we kind of gave a sneak peek to employees today, but there's a toolkit that we have developed and are working on specifically to add some specifics in for the school district, but that will hopefully help folks in many ways, from the inner work to like, "How do I show up in the classroom and support folks that are impacted?" Like, there's lots of information in there, and so, I'm excited to roll that out later this fall, hopefully, as just a, another resource that we can be giving to particularly our employees to help to be part of the solution instead of part of the problem, even if it's just like, "I'm not doing anything," right? Like, that can be problematic. And so, yeah, I think that there's lots of opportunity, and I'm excited to dig in and support you all with that, but it will take time, absolutely. So, but yes, I'm excited. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 9.2. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will now present the seclusion, restraint, and bullying report for the 2223 school year. This item will appear on the September 11th consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. So, I'm going to do this a little bit out of order because Amanda just presented our survey results. And so, I'm going to start with the bullying, and I just want to make sure that we're under the understanding of how this data is collected. So, Amanda's data is from survey results and also from talking with students and staff. The WRBS is done from students, and that's perception data, they're, they're giving their perception or their, their reality. This data that we're pulling here is based on the data from our administrators who investigate bullying in the building. And bullying is categorized different than harassment. So, typically, when we're talking about race, base, sex, gender, ability, those types of things get coded under the category harassment, and that's not what is in this, these numbers. Now, could, these could be based on harassment too, but typically, when we categorize bullying, it is chronic or it's continuous, whereas harassment could be one time, and that, so that gets coded differently. So, I just want to make sure that's, everyone's under that understanding. And again, these are only the reported bullying, the bullying reports that have been investigated by administrators. We have other reports that we've investigated, and they have not turned up as actual meeting the definition of bullying. So, just wanted to go through that. However, what I would say is, the toolkit that's provided and all of the work that we're doing with DEI and with Amanda will definitely dovetail into all of our work that we already do with bullying and harassment, and it will all just tie in. So, that being said, our numbers do look different on all of those three different reports, but I think the work we're doing will definitely help all of it improve, I hope. That's our goal. So, then, back up to seclusion and restraint. I don't need to read the numbers for you. What I will tell you is, I, the difference in this year is I've added a couple of our agency reports. So, we have students at Chalita, Driftless Pass, Driftless Path, Pass, and Catholic, Cooley Connections. We have to add those numbers in our data. So, this year, I have included Chalitas and Driftless Pass. Cooley said they don't have any specific seclusion and restraints for students there. So, those are added. And then, just a couple of reflections in looking at the data from last year. It's really hard to compare year to year, knowing that we have different students in different situations. So, this is not typically the data that I would say you can look year on year. What I would say is, what we've been seeing is, some of our schools have seen an increase in numbers of restraint and seclusion. Evergreen's one of them, and that's why Rachel's here. But I do, part of, part of the reason I'm singling them out right now is because we're being proactive. We looked at this data, and even at the beginning of the year last year, started having conversations about, "What are we going to do because we can't continue down this path?" So, what we've done is, we've partnered with Cooley Connections, and we're working on a pilot this fall to implement what, what they term "impact," and it's a framework that includes Circle of Security, Zones of Regulation, and a lot of different cognitive behavioral work. And so, we'll be starting that right on day one and working with Cooley. They'll be in our building, trying to help us. And then, also, Sand Lake is working on another leveled system. Our other two elementary buildings have already been working on that path, so their numbers are fluctuating because of their work. So, again, Sand Lake will be starting theirs on day one, too. It's, it's going to look different because they're not working on the pilot with Cooley this year. That's strictly Evergreen. So, hopefully, we'll be seeing differences in our numbers that we're addressing some of our challenges upfront and being proactive about that, so.
Is Cooley doing that work in other school districts?
We are the first school district around to partner in this intense manner, I would say. They partner, I've partnered with Cooley for years. We have ne, we've always talked about something like this because you talk about the transition back to school after a student's been removed, but this is the first time I've ever been a part of something so intense, and the work is, it's a shift. It's a complete shift. And Rachel and her team at Evergreen have worked tirelessly this summer to get that set up, room set up, meeting with Cooley, really digging in and learning a lot about rational attachment and kind of how we approach learning about our kids and sorting our kids. So, it's been great work, and we're looking forward to seeing how it, how it's going. I know Rachel and her team have met with parents already, so we'll see. But yeah, we're kind of excited to see how it's going. I know Cooley's nervous and excited, too, because we are the first district they've been partnered, we've been partnering with this closely.
Yeah. So... It might be good, like later in the school year, to...
Yeah.
...provide us an update on what's happening in Evergreen and see if it's working or not, or I...
We're going to.
We're committed.
I'd like just to learn more about it and what the approach is, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty vast. I mean, that was just a really surface-level approach. And then, like I said, we have a leveled set of behavior systems in all of our other schools. They just look a little bit different. We're going to try this out, and I think part of it, too, is we have a small population of students attending Cooley right now, and we wanted to set them up for success as we transition them back. So, again, Rachel and her team have worked really hard. We've also, I think many of you have probably heard of Get Kids Ahead! funds that have come to our school district. That's what we're using this year to help support the professional development and the contracts and all of the supplies that we need to get that set up, so. We appreciate, appreciate that.
Yeah, I echo, I would love to hear progress, and I'm so thankful that you're investing at the elementary age level, because I know when kids get to middle school, it's just so much harder to manage, so.
Yeah, and I think nationwide, we've seen kids younger and younger really struggling with a lot of just dysregulation, and so, trying to work on that much, much earlier. Even our early childhood numbers are trending really high right now. So, the earlier, the better for us.
All right, any other questions?
Questions?
All right, thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 9.3. Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards will present the Dual Credit Memorandums of Understanding for UW River Falls and Oshkosh. The MOUs will appear on the September 11th consent agenda.
Yes, so, I am really excited to share with you an opportunity to expand some of our dual credit offerings for our high school students. So, as you mentioned, we have two MOUs before us. This would allow us to expand our offerings so that our instructors, who are qualified... This would allow us to expand our offerings so that our instructors who are qualified, we would have them teach classes that would be aligned with college, well, these university courses taught on our campus by our instructors for a greatly reduced cost for our students. So our students would be essentially simultaneously earning high school credit as well as college credit in the UW system, which could then be transferred out. So I know every fall, Lindsay Sipe, our academic and career counselor, comes before us, and we go through our early college credit program, and our Start College Now, and our AP, and our trans scripted credit. This is another, another way to access those university credits, and we'll really at that time go through what that looks like, looking back over the past year. This would be an expansion of opportunities. So right now, we're looking at outdoor adventures with UW Oshkosh, and then we're looking with River Falls to potentially offer some 100 level English classes and potentially even some of our math classes. I need, oh, what's also really cool is these two universities will also provide tuition assistance for our families who qualify under the free and reduced lunch program. So essentially getting half credit, university credits at cost, so pretty exciting. Questions about that?
Questions? No questions, thank you.
All right.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like an item pulled out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved?
Motion by Kadisha.
Second.
Second by Maggie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or community reports you have. So tonight, we'll start with Kadisha.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone who presented, well, I'm actually very excited about the college credit thing. I feel like that was maybe like buried in some of this other bigger picture stuff. That is a really cool opportunity for a student, so I'm very thankful that we're exploring those kinds of, those kind of opportunities to increase our academic excellence here at I've had the privilege of knowing Amanda since I was a freshman at UWL, and so to get to work with her in this capacity, I know how incredible she is, and so I'm very thankful that this school district, I mean, this happened before I was even on the radar of running for this position, and so the fact that this was already in place when I got here was, I felt, helped me feel like I was gonna have a better time, you know, on this board, and I would have something to like go off of that would really strike a lot of my passion. So if you're ever wondering where I get all my activist spirit from, a lot of it comes from that lady, so either feel great about that or have some feelings about that. Something that I did want to call out that kind of, I think, got lost during our last board meeting that I'm very excited about going through in our consent agenda this evening is the positions that are coming for the Adaptive Sports League for the middle school. The Adaptive Sports League is something that I participated in as a student helper when I was a part of National Honor Society in high school, so it holds a very special place in my heart, and I think the fact that we're expanding that program at the middle school is really cool, so I didn't want that to get lost. I'm very excited about that as well. So otherwise, I hope everyone's ready for Friday because our school year is starting again. I wish all of our students, our staff, our educators, and, you know, our district administrators as well, all the best of luck on their new school year. Hopefully, I was the kid who like could not sleep the night before, so hopefully, everybody's getting maybe on their bedtime schedule this week. I know I will probably have to do that too, going back to, going back to work, so best of luck, and hopefully, everyone had a wonderful summer.
All right, thank you. Lindsay?
Yeah, I echo what you guys have all said, that I'm just really appreciative for the new opportunities that are coming, and looking forward to be on a committee and see what other processes are about being on a board, so I'm looking forward to the school year starting. And, you know, I just wanted to address people that have been emailing since our last meeting. I really am appreciative of individuals that are looking forward to how we can be proactive and work together and come up with some solutions to things, and really just overall, come back together and help individuals understand what's really going on and, you know, taking away assumptions and things that are going around and help replace with the facts of what's going on in our systems and how we can improve upon things and work better together. So looking forward to what's to come, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Maggie?
I will echo the kudos to Amanda and for all the work that went into the survey process as, and I also agree with you, Lindsay, that I've appreciated some of the emails that have come in since the last meeting. And then, you know, I meant to say this, I think, the last two board meetings, but I also wanted to not forget to give kudos to everyone who's involved in the roundabout, because I drive through that every time I'm on my way to a board meeting, and it's so nice. So kudos to everyone who's supported that plan and all of the interim adjustments that had to happen to make it, to make it happen. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Bridgette?
I was thinking the same thing about the roundabout today, like, I love this so much. I just, you know, I was really honored to be part of the back to school kickoff this morning and to see, you know, how many new staff we have, and then so many individuals who've been here for decades. And I know Rachel's in the room today, and I can't stop laughing about that video today, so kudos to all of like the building administrators and Travis, like that was amazing, like seriously, Rachel, I've been giggling all day thinking about you. I did want to bring up one issue. I know we're going to that cashless entry for our athletics, and I just want to be mindful about equity when we roll out, you know, policies, procedures that, I know for myself, I don't tend to send phones with my kids when they go to events, because I want them to be present, engaging, and really mindful, like the social emotional learning of being part of school events. And I know they have friends that actually don't have phones, and so I had to put tickets on my phone to go to the football game Friday night, and I just started thinking about like elderly individuals who might not have the ability, because it was a process to kind of, you know, get those apps and get those tickets. So as much as I love it, I also want to be mindful that it might not be the best option for everyone in our community, so. And then, yeah, thank you, Amanda, for that wonderful report. Thanks.
All right, Barb?
I echo what Bridgette said. Thank you, Amanda. I look so forward to working with you. I think one of the most impactful pieces is knowing that there were over 2,000 responses. We're not dealing with just a small piece of our population, and I think that that is going to be very important moving forward with the committee and, you know, the plans we put together. So I'm very excited. And also, I was also at the welcome back this morning, and I appreciate the energy, and I do think it's very telling, and we have so many employees that have been here more than 15 years. I think that is a true testament to our district as a whole and that our educators and our staff are committed to being here. So I look forward to the school year and get ready for Friday.
All right, thanks, Barb. Crystal?
Okay, so I'll just start by saying that I hope everyone within the district has had like a good summer so far, since school is like literally around the corner, like this Friday. And so I hope that everybody is like getting their back to school shopping in and is just having a good time getting ready for school, because like what Kadisha said, I was, I'm always one of those kids that like can't sleep the night before school, and then I wake up like an hour early before like I even have to go to the building. So it's really exciting for school to just come up. And I also want to say thank you for Amanda for creating that slide with all of the data because, like, I hope this doesn't like go towards me, but like especially as a minority and a student myself, understanding, having adults and everybody here understanding and knowing what certain students and people go through is a good way for us to motivate ourselves to become more educated with this type of ideal and issue. And I just want to say like, thank you, Amanda, because like this can also help like our students recognize what is actually like going on within our district and what we could actually do to like help create a better awareness and education for our students, because we're a community, and I think it's important for us to emphasize that and include everybody that we can, especially us being known as the school district of Holman. So, yeah, thank you for that data. I really appreciate it, like on my half as a student, and I'm pretty sure multiple students who had their voices heard through you was also really important, and I'm pretty sure, 100% sure, they appreciated you as well. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Crystal. Okay, and I guess I just want to say that I was at the school kickoff event this morning. It was full of energy, it was a ton of fun, I loved the excitement there, and then when we were handing out the awards, was it 20, 20 years and more? It just made it, it just kind of was impactful, the number of hands I shook for people that already had an impact on my kids that were there that long. So there was, there was a number of them, from 4K to the Sand Lake staff, so I was, yeah, I was impacted by that, I guess, so. Moving on to the board meeting schedule, our next meeting was, is on September 11th, and then, and then September 25th. On October 5th is the Wasby Fall Regional Meeting Workshop, so we will not be having a regular board workshop in October. We will be all attending that Fall Regional Meeting Workshop on October 5th if possible. And then on October 9th, we have another meeting, and then on October 23rd is, it's the night of our big annual meeting. So we start out with the budget hearing at 6:00 PM, followed by the annual meeting, followed by the board meeting, and I believe this year that will all take place here in the boardroom, and we will not be in the Fine Arts Center, so. Okay. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Okay, well, we'll do Maggie and has moved it, and Bridgette has second, to adjourn the meeting at 8:02 PM. Motion carried, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes.